I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Go ahead and consider our motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sherri, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ayers?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. We'll move on to our consent agenda. It gets our motion to approve.
So moved, Madam Chair. I'll second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Sherri, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ayers?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. We'll move on to our opportunity for public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to come up and speak to the board, come on up, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Hey, good morning. My name is Jessica Palama, and I'm a resident of Lincoln County in T. I am here today to talk to you about drop boxes. Drop boxes were introduced in 2020 to make voting easier during a pandemic. Easier does not mean better, more efficient, or more secure. We know that drop boxes were introduced for mass ballot harvesting. These drop boxes were used all across the country and have been proven to be used by large ballot trafficking rings to allow for the middle-of-the-night ballot dumps. These events were caught live on video. I want to refer you to, I don't know if you can write this down, 2000mules.com. This new documentary contains video surveillance and evidence of ballot traffickers dumping fraudulent ballots in drop boxes during the 2020 election. Many of these drop boxes were purchased with money given to counties by the Center for Civic Life and Technology or Mark Zuckerberg. Did the drop box outside the courthouse here show up after Lincoln County and receive money from Mark Zuckerberg? If so, who authorized the purchase of the drop box? And is it secure? After much research, we know drop boxes come with standard locking mechanisms from the manufacturer, one key for all locks. I like to explain it like this. We all live in the same apartment building, and the same key opens all the doors in the building. How secure would you feel living in this apartment? Does a Lincoln County drop box have standard locks? We know there is video surveillance on the drop box, but who is monitoring the video feed live 24/7 for 45 days while this box is used? And what is the reasoning we are using to justify having a drop box outside the courthouse? It's a few yards from the front door. Couldn't a person walk the next few steps into the building and deliver their ballot to the auditor, or mail it in the secure envelope? Would you put an envelope with $1,000 worth of cash in that box outside? I am here again this week to ask you, the commissioners, to consider removing this ballot drop box immediately. My father and grandfather served our country to protect our freedoms and my right to vote. This is a sacred right and a privilege. It should be treated as such, and only the most secure methods of voting should be used. Using drop boxes is not one of them. I am the leader of the South Dakota canvassing group, and we have a presentation Saturday, February 19, in Sioux Falls at Oak Hills Baptist Church at 10:00 a.m. We would like to invite, extend an invitation to all of you to attend this event and see what our group with cyber experts, CPAs, and volunteers have found about our elections in South Dakota. If we may give you an invitation.
Come on.
Thank you for your time. Come on. Thanks.
Morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Scott Montgomery, 320 Elm, Fairview, South Dakota. I'd like to talk to you about election integrity. Election year 2020, Lincoln County applied for and received a grant in the amount of $14,436 from the Center for Technology and Civil Life, from here on referred to as CTCL. Were there stipulations tied to this grant? If so, what were they? Why did Lincoln County apply for this grant? Were the commissioners aware of this application and word of this grant? CCL, CTCL, is a left-of-center election reform advocacy group formed in 2012. They pushed for left-of-center voting policies and election administration. Why would Lincoln County apply for and accept money from such an organization? Did Lincoln County have an election integrity problem or an appearance of an election integrity problem prior to 2020 elections? Or did this start after Lincoln County accepted the private election money? On June 16, 2020, CTCL released a webinar entitled "Organizing Ballot Drop-Off Locations: A Tutorial on How Election Officials Should Manage the Ballot Drop-Off Process." It encouraged election offices to show eligible voters how they can engage in this method of voting, especially voters in communities with low-vote-by-mail registrations. On June 30, 2020, CTCL posted a webinar entitled "Combating Election Misinformation" as a resource to help election officials be reliable sources of information to combat misinformation. It justified the need for election officials to combat misinformation, citing Russian interference in the 2016 elections, and claimed Donald Trump himself had been a source of disinformation. Did Lincoln County employees participate in these webinars? If so, why? CCLC requires the grant recipient, which is Lincoln County, to file a COVID-19 response grant form explaining how they spent the money. Is the commission aware of this report? How was the money spent? Possibly drop boxes? Were these drop boxes used or needed before 2020? Who authorized the drop boxes? Who installed the drop boxes? Was there, is there, video of the drop boxes, and was it watched or reviewed? If so, by whom? Who has the key to these drop boxes? Is there more than one? Is there a chain of custody of the ballots? For the years 2015 through 2019, the most money CCL, CTCL, ever raised for a year was $3.4 million. For the years 2015 through 2019, the highest net assets were $3 million. In the year 2020, the money raised, they had raised money of $356 million, a $353 million increase. Year 2020, their assets went from 23 million to, went to 23 million, a 20 million increase. Where did this huge amount of money come from? On September 20, on September 1, 2020, Facebook founder and CEO Mark Zuckerberg and his wife, Priscilla Chan, announced they were donating $250 million to CTCL. On October 20, Zuckerberg and Chan announced they were donating an additional $100 million to CTCL, despite the first round of grants sparking controversy among conservatives, leading some groups to file lawsuits. Mark Zuckerberg is well-known for his extreme-left-leaning political agenda. Facebook regularly removes postings from those who lean right. Why would you have accepted a grant from an organization? Would you have accepted a grant from an organization openly supporting Donald Trump? If so, why, or why not? The voters of Lincoln County deserve answers to these questions I have asked here today. We deserve to know that our elections are protected from outside influence. From the research I have done, I'm not confident they are. Knowing all this, would you again accept private donations in the future elections? Accepting private donations for elections can and does put doubt in the integrity of the election. It should never be allowed to happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Jay Hammerick. I live at 4904 East 62nd Street in Sioux Falls. Just a sketch into Lincoln County, just moved there four years ago. Really enjoy being in Lincoln County. The people here at the courthouse really offer personal service and answer all your questions, and they did that this morning for me when I had some questions about the election. But the reason I'm here is that the last election, 220, my wife and I received a ballot, each one of us, in the mail with an application for an absentee ballot. And I thought, well, I didn't apply for anything. Why am I getting this? So I called the Lincoln County Auditor's Office, and they were very polite and explained to me that the Secretary of State's office at peer decided that because of COVID, they were going to mail everybody in the state an application and an absentee vote. I'm not a politician, but I know that's against the law. The law says we have to apply as a voter for an absentee ballot. I didn't apply, but I got one, and so did every other voter. And so I was a little bit leery then. How safe are our elections? So my wife and I filled out our ballot, and I called the Lincoln County Auditor's Office again, and they said they had these drop boxes. Well, I'm not putting my ballot in the drop box. I didn't even ask for this ballot, and it shows up in the mail. So I got my pickup, and I drove down here and talked to the nice people in the auditor's office, and they were really nice and explained it to me again. And I asked them for a receipt that my two votes, my wife's and I, were turned in, and they gave it to me. It was, it was awesome. But what about all the other people that got this ballot in the mail and heard on TV, hey, I can just take it over here to the church parking lot and leave it off, or bring it down and put it in the drop box here, any time of the day, any, any day of the week? How secure are they that that vote really, really got here? And how secure are they that people that weren't eligible to vote, registered voters in our, in our district and our county, received these ballots at an address they no longer live at, and somebody filled them out and brought them in and put it in that, that box? I don't know, but I'm guessing it's very possible. The reason I bring this up is, in 219, the United States Supreme Court was asked this very question from the state of Arizona. And in South Dakota, anybody can be a messenger, in other words, be the conduit person to bring the vote and turn it in at the election office on behalf of any voter. However, the voter still has to fill out the application for an absentee ballot, and the ballot itself, according to the auditor's office, is mailed to them. The messenger can't take it and bring it out and deliver it, have them fill it out, and bring it back on their behalf and turn it in at one of these boxes or here at the auditor's office. And that's what I think we need to pay attention to, is who is handling these ballots and where are they going? My thoughts are this. The Supreme Court said if there's an opportunity for fraud, then fraud is a reality, and we can then validate restrictions on how we vote based on the opportunity for fraud. Now, the opposition says, well, prove it. Well, we don't have to prove it. Common sense says if you are living at an address and a ballot shows up, what do you care? You could fill it out. You don't have to send anything in, or proof or anything. Fill it out in the name of the person and bring it down in the dark at night and put it in the box. Nobody's going to know. It's in with all the other ballots, and there's just no way to determine if that person, in fact, did vote. So the Supreme Court ruled in favor of the state of Arizona on the restrictions they made. They're more strict than South Dakota. They say that only a relative, a person living in the household, or an immediate relative that's not living in the household can act as a messenger and bring that vote to the election official. But the key is, the vote is supposed to go by state law to the election official, not to some inanimate object sitting out there in the street in the dark of night.
Thank you, sir.
And so I just ask you to consider that.
Points well taken. Thank you. Anybody else want to come up?
Hello?
Can you just state your name and address, please?
My name is Jason Wheat. My address is 4305 East 23rd Street, Sioux Falls, and I just want to come and talk about some different things. My, my, one of my occupations is a pastor at a church. We actually do have security cameras and everything. And I know one of the things with the drop boxes is that we're all supposedly relying on security cameras pretty heavily. At our church, we've had a few different incidents that, that have happened, and obviously with this rolling film, and we don't have anyone obviously manning that either, it is very difficult to go back and find these small little things inside of a video stream and actually figure out what's going on. We've had a neighbor have a trailer stolen, for instance, and we had to go back through the cameras, and we had to try and figure out what time it happened, because we didn't even know what day. It was like within three days, and then you start going through that film. It is a lot of work. And my question to you all would be, who watches the video? How would you ever go through the video to figure something out? The other person had referred to the 200 mules, and definitely then now, if we have a pack of maybe 20 or whatever ballots all in one hand, when it goes in, how do you know that there were 20? When you get 20 into the ballot box, how do you know which ones are good, which ones are bad? And so that's some of the concerns. I have a Ring camera at my house. Again, sometimes it's really hard to even get the app up and running, to even answer the doorbell when the doorbell rings. Takes a little bit of time. You got all your buffering and all your different trouble with that. But with the Ring doorbell, I also have connection to all the neighbors within my area showing all the problems that are happening. There are people that are going, checking door handles. There's people that, on cars, to see if they're open to steal stuff, to steal the car. There are people coming up stealing mail. There are people that are coming door-to-door, seeing if garage doors are open, walking through people's backyards. This stuff gets posted on my Ring constantly, people's specific concerns. And I don't see any difference with the situation that we have out here. So again, my concern would be, how, how do we work a drop box and make it actually secure? I have no problem with everyone who is a legitimate citizen having their vote and being, it being protected. My concern comes when there's obviously people in our community that have ulterior motives. I want them stopped, and I would hope that you guys want them stopped, too. So I'm, I'm just referring mostly to the issue with the drop box, the fact that it's out there, the fact that you have made a new opportunity that removes the ability for people to have accountability, to whether it's showing their identification or proving the specific ballot that they've requested. There's a lot of problems with that, and I guess I'm not too naive to all of that stuff. I live in the world, and there's definitely problems. So I think we should be more secure, for sure, at least in the election. Right now, I think that's one of our concerns in general as we move towards the future. So thank you very much for listening to our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll move along with commissioner reports. Any commissioners have a report they'd like to make today? If not, we're going to move into our regular business. I'm going to ask for an executive session at the request of Commissioner Poppins this morning. We'll go into executive session. The motion I would like would be under SDCL 125-2 sub 1, and SDCL 125-2 sub 3, and 4.
Madam Chair, I'll offer that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Sherri, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ayers?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Motion to come out of executive session.
All right, so moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sherri, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ayers?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. We have, Bill, on number three, is that, what is, it's kind of general on here. What is it?
It is a continuation of, it's State v. Patterson. It is the case, a habeas corpus case that is being handled by-
Okay, so that's a state's attorney deal.
That is a state's attorney's deal. That is, we're asking for permission to hire an expert. It exceeds the $5,000, so I think it's a $25,000 contract with an expert who will assist the Attorney General's Office in defending a habeas corpus proceedings concerning State v. Patterson. It was a murder case involving a three-year-old.
Sure.
And so you've already approved one contract, which was for, I think, a physician. This is another expert in the case that they need in order to defend it.
Thank you.
Bill, I looked at it. Is, it's based on, what, $300 an hour? Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that pretty much standard?
Unfortunately, yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
I've heard the request on item three on our agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll so moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Sherri, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ayers?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. On items one and two on our agenda, I would like a motion to table those till our next meeting. I think there are, we need to have some more discussions with Mr. Strasberg on those two issues before we're ready to move on with that. So I would ask for that motion to table those first two items just until the next meeting.
Next meeting being when?
February 22.
Yeah.
Yes.
I will make that motion at your request, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Well, I'll second it for discussion.
Any further discussion? What did you want to discuss, Commissioner Gibbon?
I guess is it advantageous for us to table it or move forward now?
Bill, do you want to come up, please, for? On the, what's item one specifically?
I believe, item one, I believe Mr. Strasberg would like to move with those two objects, those two at the same time, which is an RFP for the architect, engineer, as well as with the contract manager at risk. And so I don't think that issue's really ripe at the moment, and so I would ask you to table it. As far as number two, I mean, you could go ahead and approve Mr. Strasberg to move forward in setting up his committee and then bringing that back for approval of the commission. That might move, at least give some movement on that.
Right. I just don't think we were at the point where we're ready to appoint actual members today, so that-
We are not. So you may want to just table the whole thing.
And that was my request.
All right. Thank you.
And Mr. Strasberg, do you have anything to say about that? Do you think you're at the point for us to act on these? And if you'd come up to the mic, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, I think if we, the suggestion that we take, you know, the next couple of weeks to put together the committee on, you know, structuring that, I think that's, that's fine. And then making the decision on, you know, what to do with the architect and the CM, RFP at that time would be fine. It delays everything, you know, basically two weeks.
And I hate, hate, hate these delays. So on item one, the request for proposal for services for an RFP for a construction company, are you talking about an architect, or?
It'd be two different RFPs.
Okay.
One for the construction manager we need to do regardless.
Okay.
So that we could, we could move forward with that. And, because we'd interview, you know, go through a typical process on that, follow the state guidelines on it.
On the-
On the construction manager.
Yes. I think, I think we can move forward on that, perhaps. Commission, what do you think?
We had a meeting on Friday. Madam Chair, it was the kickoff meeting with the members of the Courthouse Improvement Committee, as well as Mr. Strasberg. And what we discussed on Friday at the meeting is the need to issue an RF, the next action item for the commission was the commission had to issue an RFP for a construction company. When we say "construction company," what we're talking about is a construction manager or a construction manager at risk or some form thereof. So that's the number-one thing we need to start taking RFPs on, just in order to move the process forward. Mr. Strasberg explained during the meeting that the way he likes to move forward with his projects, and he outlined in the meeting that this is the preferred method used by other municipalities right here in South Dakota, is to do so with the use of a construction manager or a construction manager at risk. That was point number one. Point number two that was made at the meeting is that we would need to hire a, or excuse me, let out an RFP for the use of architectural and engineering services. Those are two different, technically, two different RFPs, one for an architect and one for an engineer. Mr. Strasberg, and he can explain further if he wants to, but during the committee meeting, what we talked about is that the preferred method is to let the RFP out at the same time. He called it bundling the services. So what we would do is we would let out an RFP for both architectural and engineering services for consideration. And so that was a, he explained that was a preferred method, and that's, again, just like with a CM and a CMAR, that's how they like to do it with these projects. And there seemed to be general consensus among the members of the Improvement Committee after understanding the explanation that Mr. Strasberg gave, is that is the way to move forward in this kind of process.
Commissioner, was there a meeting on Friday?
Maybe I'm giving the wrong day. Did we do it on Thursday?
Friday.
Yeah, it was Friday. You were on that meeting, Commissioner.
Okay.
Mr. Strasberg, I'm sure you can speak for yourself on those points, but is that what you would like to do to move this process forward, have an RFP for both of those things at the same time?
Yeah. So we look at, just to be clear on it, you know, hiring the architect and the engineer, we recommend if you're going to do an RFP on it, you bundle those together, because you want to have the engineers work for the, for the architect under one contract. And then on the construction manager at risk, have one separate RFP for that as well.
So we have a motion to table and a second. I'm going to ask that that motion be withdrawn at this time.
I withdraw that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And the second is withdrawn as well. Commissioner Gibbon?
I'll second it.
Withdraw.
Withdraw, yes.
Thank you. So with that, I entertain a new motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. We authorize requests for proposal of services for a construction company, and we also authorize requests for proposal of architectural and engineering services to be split into two different RFPs. And as part of my motion, I would also move that before the RFP is let, Mr. Strasberg will have to show that RFP back to this commission again for us to improve, endorse, modify, and I think that's the standard practice anyway. So that would be my motion, if you understand it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I cannot support that motion, unfortunately, due to the fact I don't think the clarity has been established on whether or not a current architectural is still under contract or as of yet. I think that discussion has to be clarified, and I would have liked the opportunity to visit with Mr. Strasberg before today's conversation, but after repeated attempts, that did not happen. So I would like the, either tabled again or separated the two items. Thank you.
Is it, Mr. Strasberg, have you had a chance to talk to all the commissioners? I know you talked to myself, you talked to Joel, you talked to Commissioner or the Chair. Have you talked to Jim or?
I have not. I'd walk in that opportunity.
Do you believe there could be some discussion needed on whether or not there's clarity on whether or not there is a contract that exists?
I'd probably defer to your legal counsel on it, but yeah, I think that's, I think that's, sure.
Well, in lieu of the fact that, that you haven't talked to two commissioners, to be fair for them to have the same input that you shared with Commissioner Landin, Commissioner Ayers, and myself. Aaronz, and myself, I think it's only fair that we wait until you've had that conversation because then I think everybody is treated fairly. So...
Well, here's, here's where I'm at. If we do the RFPs, we get those out, we get that process moving, we can parse that out. We're not on any under, under any obligation by getting the RFP submissions. We're still able to hire our own architect or make some other decision regarding an architect. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's correct.
So I think we just do this, get it done, get it out there, and move it forward, if that's what we're going to do.
I respect that, Madam Chair.
I can go along with that.
And Dick, just so everybody understands how this will work mechanically speaking, we make this motion today, we authorize requests for proposal of services. Essentially, all you're going to do is send us your draft RFP.
Correct.
And you are an owner's rep, so you're providing us with an RFP that presumably you've used in other instances, but that is advantageous and represents the best interest of the county.
Correct.
And then before that RFP goes to the public, you're going to come back to us at our next meeting here on the 22nd, you'll say, or before then, you know, there'll be some offline conversations, say, teach the commissioners, here's the RFP, do you like it? What don't you like? Would you like to change? And then as part of that mechanical process, we come back here on the 22nd, and that's when we'll actually endorse moving it out the door to the public, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
A statement on that, please. I can respect that we're going to go ahead and advertise for an RFP, but until we have a decision on whether or not we are under contract, I would recommend, and hopefully council would have a comment, that we not open any RFPs until that decision, I think, is answered.
I'm going to defer to council on that issue, but I think we can authorize the RFPs today if we're ready to move forward on that.
If you're authorizing them without issuing them, I would like to talk to you about those issues in executive session. I would give you my legal opinion.
Okay.
And give you all the options.
Well, I'll withdraw the motion and make a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of SDCL. One dash twenty-five dash two sub three.
And probably four as well. Would you agree?
And four.
See, withdraw a second.
Is there, do you withdraw that second that you had?
The motion was for executive session under...
It was to...
Authorize advertising.
Advertising.
You just need to redraw, withdraw your second.
So you'd...
I'll second it.
No.
No, withdraw.
Oh, excuse me. I'll withdraw, yes.
And then we need a second. Then we need a second for the executive session.
Is there a second on the executive session?
Who gave the motion?
I did.
Commissioner Aaronz.
Oh, sorry, I did not hear it. Second.
Sherry, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Second? Thank you. Sherry, you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We're going to move ahead with our first readings. Sherry, are you going to handle that?
Yes.
Thanks.
This is a first reading for ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, amending the 2009 revised zoning ordinance for Lincoln County by rezoning property legally described as track one, Voges Edition, and lot B, track one, Voges Edition, northeast one quarter, section nine, township ninety-eight north, Lincoln County, South Dakota, from rural residential to commercial district, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County.
Thank you. Was staff going to come down, or we're just going to do these?
No, just read them.
And then, or just read all of the...
Yeah, what we're, yeah, the first readings, we're just going to read the things, and then the staff will do all the explanation during the second.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, the second one is the first reading of ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, amending the 2009 revised zoning ordinance for Lincoln County by rezoning property legally described as lot two, track three, Hughes and Good Farms, second edition, southwest quarter, section two, township ninety-nine, north fifty west, Lincoln County, South Dakota, from A1 Agriculture District to rural residential district, and amending the official map of Lincoln County. And the third one is the first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, amending the 2009 revised zoning ordinance for Lincoln County by rezoning property legally described as tracks one, five, five A, except lot H1 Smith's Edition, southeast quarter, section thirty-one, township one hundred north, fifty west, Lincoln County, South Dakota, from I1 Light Industrial District to C Commercial District to the PD Planning Development District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County.
Thank you. We'll move on to item seven on our agenda. Good morning, Terry.
Good morning. I have before you is looking for permission or authorization to advertise for bids for the 2022 micro, micro surfacing project. A little background on that, we're going to do about 20 miles this year is what I have pegged out. The cost estimate come out for that, that's attached to this. It's nine hundred eighty-one thousand three eighty-five is what the cost estimate to do this. So I guess roads, it's going to be County Road 105, old Highway seventeen from Highway forty-six all the way up to State Highway forty-four. And then we'll do County Road 122, which is east of Casey's by Lennox over there, three miles, so.
Thank you. Heard the request. Is there a motion?
I'll so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Sherry, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Move on to item eight.
Next item I have is approve and authorize the chair to execute temporary easements. This is for the replacement of the Lake Alvin Bridge, structure four-two dash one four-eight dash zero five zero. They're ease, temporary easements with game fishing parks.
I've heard the request. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Would you read the motion, Madam Chair?
It's a motion to approve and authorize the chair to execute the temporary easements.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And item nine, Terry?
Next item I have, we're going to be rewarding, approving and awarding the 2022 supply bids. We opened up bids yesterday, eleven o'clock. So I'll just go down the order, and then for each one of these items that will need approval, I'll have to have a motion for each one, so. And I will read off all the, the bids allowed. So first item up here we have for bid is the concrete products. That item I am going to hold off, and we'll do that at the, the next meeting, because typically on this one, I have multiple sheets of items that they bid, and we usually accept the bid on both of those items. And again, because we can pick back and forth which one's cheaper, which items on that. So we're going to, we're going to hold that one for next meeting. So next item I have is going to be the crush concrete bid. We had three bidders. Concrete Materials was eleven fifty a ton, Seal Pros was eleven dollars a ton, and LG Everest was eleven ten a ton. So low bid is ten fifty for concrete materials, so that's my recommendation to accept their bid.
Heard the request. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sherry, you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
So the next item is cutting edges and plow blades. The first item on there, again, for all, both of these items, we had three bidders on this. First item on there, I'm going to reject those bids. One of the, the bidders has an issue. I didn't, I didn't have the spec properly. I don't have it spelled out in my, my spec, so we're just going to reject those, and we'll rebid them next year. So we're going to go through the rubber flex blades. Again, three bidders. Equipment, equipment blades for four hundred and forty-nine per blade, DMC wear parts, four sixty-three, twenty-one per four-foot blade, and then wear parts and, and equipment, four hundred and ninety-five dollars for a four-foot blade. So low, low on that is equipment blades for four forty-nine, so that's my recommendation to accept that bid.
Motion to accept equipment blades bid?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt. Sherry, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item I have is diesel fuel. Again, three bidders on this. Number one is CHS Farmers Alliance. It was two dollars and ninety-four cents a gallon. Kohl's Petroleum was two seventy-eight, fifty a gallon, and Volan Oil was two seventy-seven per gallon. Low bid on the diesel is Volan Oil, so recommendation is to award to Volan Oil for two seventy-seven a gallon.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sherry, you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item under there is the, the ethanol gas. Again, three bidders. Bid number one is CHS Farmers Alliance. It's two ninety-nine a gallon. Kohl's Petroleum was two ninety-seven a gallon, and Volan was three oh three a gallon. A low bid here is Kohl's Petroleum, so we'd award to Kohl's for two ninety-seven a gallon.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that bid?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sherry, you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item I have is mag chloride. We had two bidders here. Bid number one is Dustbusters Incorporated for a dollar three a gallon. The next bid was Environmental Dust Control for two eighty-nine a gallon. So low bid is Dustbusters Incorporated for a dollar three a gallon. That's my recommendation to award to.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved to award to Dustbusters Inc.
Thanks. Second. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Sherry, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item I have is plant-mixed asphalt materials. We had two bidders for these items. First item is going to be hot mix class G type one or two. Merlin Roy's is sixty-five twenty a ton. Concrete Materials is sixty dollars a ton. Recommendation is to award to Concrete Materials for sixty dollars a ton.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Sherry?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item we have is hot mix class G fines. Merlin Roy's is a hundred and five dollars and fifty cents a ton, and Concrete Materials is a hundred dollars a ton. So recommendation is to award to Concrete Materials for a hundred dollars a ton.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sherry, you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Sorry. Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item is cold mix UPM. Only one bidder, Concrete Materials, for a hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty cents a ton. So recommendation is to award to them.
Can I get a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sherry?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
All right. Next item I have is riprap, quartzite riprap. We had two bidders on this, and we're going to, what I want to do is we're going to award to, it's going to be the same bidder at multiple locations. So class A riprap, LG Everest out of Del Rapids is twenty-five forty, and out of Haywarden is thirty-four dollars a ton. And then the second bid is Concrete Materials, no bid. So my recommendation is to award class A riprap to LG Everest out of Del Rapids for twenty-five forty, and out of Haywarden for thirty-four dollars a ton.
Thank you. Further request? Is there a motion?
I, I'll so moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sherry, you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item is class B riprap. Again, LG Everest, Del Rapids, twenty-five forty a ton. LG Everest, Haywarden, thirty-four dollars a ton. Concrete Materials is forty dollars a ton. Recommendation is to accept the bid for LG Everest out of Del Rapids for twenty-five forty a ton, and out of Haywarden for thirty-four a ton.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sherry?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Class C riprap, LG Everest, Del Rapids is twenty-five sixty a ton. Out of Haywarden, it's thirty-four twenty a ton, and no bid from Concrete Materials, so recommendation is to award LG Everest, Del Rapids, twenty-five sixty a ton, and Haywarden, LG Everest, Haywarden, thirty-four twenty a ton.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sherry?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item is rock salt. So it's salting for wintertime. We had four bidders. Central Salt was eighty-two fifty-one a ton delivered. Blackstrap Incorporated is seventy, seventy-five eighty-nine delivered. Johnson Feed is seventy-five forty delivered, and Nebraska Grated Salt is seventy-five eighty-seven delivered. Low bid here is Johnson Feed, so my recommendation is to award to them for seventy-five forty per ton delivered.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
All right. Next item, last item we have is weed control chemical. First item up is Tordon twenty-two K. And again, we had two bidders on this. Per gallon price, Nutrien Solutions is forty-four ninety a gallon, and Van Deest Supply is forty-seven fifty a gallon. So recommendation is to award to Nutrien Solutions on that one for forty-four ninety a gallon.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sherry?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item, twenty-two, Tordon twenty-two K, two and a half gallon jugs. Nutrien is one twelve twenty-five a gallon. Van Deest is one eighteen seventy-five a gallon. Recommendation is to award to Nutrien Solutions for one twelve twenty-five a gallon, or two gallon, two and a half gallon, sorry.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
I'll so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sherry?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yep.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
All right, next item is Frelex. Per gallon price, two bidders. Nutrien Solutions, 2550 a gallon. Van Deest, 2550 a gallon. Recommendation is to award to both of them. So we have an option who to go with if there's a problem with supply chain, so.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second, please.
Second.
Sherry?
Commissioner Aaronson?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item is Frelex, 30 gallon container. Nutrien Solutions, 765, and Van Deest is 765. I would say we rep, we award to both of them at that price for the same reason as the other, so.
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Sherry, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronson?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item is milestone per gallon. Nutrien Solutions is 270 a gallon. Van Dees Supply is 270 a gallon. My recommendation is to award to both.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Sherry?
Commissioner Aaronson?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Last item I have for you is milestone, two and a half gallon jugs. Nutrien Solutions is 675, and Van Dees is 675, so I would award to both. My recommendation would be award both for two and a half gallon jug, 675.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sherry?
Commissioner Aaronson?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Terry, what's milestone used for?
Thistles.
Is that a thistle?
Yeah, I think so.
Is that a thistle killer?
Yeah. Yep.
Don't graze your cattle.
You can ask, ask Mr. Floyd his weed. You can educate yourself later. We're going to take a recess. Maybe you can do it during the recess. We're going to take a recess for at least probably about a half hour so that we can talk to Mr. Strasburg, each commissioner individually, before we take any other action. So we'll be in recess. We are back in session. Everybody's back in here. We had items one and two on our regular agenda today that we had not addressed. One was authorize a request for proposal for services of a construction company. How do you want to proceed, Mr. Strasburg, if you want to come on up?
Yeah, so after visiting with the commissioners, I guess we've got a recommendation here.
Okay.
And that is, we take the commissioners, there's five of you, and we'll, throughout the process over the next four months, pick two of you to be involved in different segments.
Okay.
And the first decision is to go with, is to take who is involved in making the selection with the architect and the construction manager, and being in the interview process on that. And we'd suggest we take one person from the previous commission and another person who wasn't on the commission, or not on the commission, on the committee.
Okay.
So our initial recommendation is we take Joel as, as one member for the, just for the selection process. That doesn't mean you're involved in the whole thing, it means just selection process. And then Tiffany would be the second one for the
Okay.
For the, for this initial process.
Okay, so that's how we'll start with reviewing these proposals.
Right. And then we've got a recommendation in terms of how we go about the next two weeks.
Okay.
Our next, or possibly even the next week if we, if we could. And that is, we will go and we will visit with your, with the current architect that was on the jail. We'll visit with them, talk through some potential contract turns. And in the meantime, we'll be, you know, getting RFPs prepared, both for architect and for construction manager. And we'll see where it goes with your existing provider. And, and then we'll come back and have, ask for approval of, you know, going with, either going with them, or doing an RFP.
Okay.
And then in, with the construction manager, we'd ask for the same thing. So we come